On this special edition of Thurston County Connection, we have all three of our county commissioners in the studio for a roundtable discussion. Stay tuned, this is a conversation you won't want to miss. Welcome to the commissioners and welcome to all of you, our viewers. I'm your host, Deborah Vensel, the CEO here at Thurston Community Media. We have just one housekeeping note before we jump into our discussion. There is no official business being conducted today. The commissioners do want to encourage all of you watching to attend board meetings held every Tuesday at 2:00 PM in room 280 of Building 1 at the Courthouse Complex. There you can see your local government in action. You can also watch this and other meetings live on the county's YouTube channel or replayed here on Channel 3. Let's start today's conversation with introductions, but with a bit of a twist. So, we're going to start with you Commissioner Mensah. What's your position on the board? What was your first job? And a skill that you learned in that job that you still use today?
Okay. Well, I'm Ty Mensah. I represent District 3, which is the west side of Thurston County, top to bottom. Steamboat Island, West Olympia, Tom Water, Rochester, grabs Bucauda there in the south. My assignments or my positions for 2020 are Vice Chair of the Board and Chair of the Board of Health. My first job was actually in a saloon. Kind of saloon with peanuts and shells on the-
Sawdust on the floor?
Sawdust on the floor. So, my job was to pick up cigarette butts in and among the peanut shells, change kegs, wash glasses. And I was 16 years old. I was making $3.35 an hour minimum wage. And I guess that taught me the skill of humility and hard work. There were 13-hour shifts on Sunday while we swept all the peanut shells off the floor and ammoniaed the floor and then put down the new layer for the next week. So, I did that job for about a year, a little over a year. And yeah, I still remember it very clearly.
So, the lesson of humility you bring with you?
Well, you know, I was a good student. I was a good athlete. I was an honor student at my school. But when I got to work, after work, it was different. I was the bottom of the totem pole.
You swept up the peanut shells.
If somebody got sick in the bathroom, it was Ty, go take care of that. So, it was a good skill. It's good as a county commissioner to have that kind of perspective, I'd say.
Okay.
Use that skill today?
I do use that skill.
How about you Commissioner Hutchings? Your first job, well, your role on the board, your first job, and a skill you learned in that job that you still use today?
Well, I'll tell you, I am the Chair of the Board. This is my second year as the Chair. And I'm the Commissioner for District Number 1, which is ironically enough, I sit in the middle on the dais, but it's right down the middle of the county from Johnson Point all the way down to Tenino. I did have construction and maintenance-type jobs as a teenager. And I did learn the value of hard work by virtue of my dad ensuring that we did that hard work. Now, I forgot what I was making back in the 70s, but it wasn't much. But the biggest, I guess the biggest profession that I had, a skill-building profession, was my 35 years in law enforcement. What that taught me was, number one, believe it or not, people don't like, some people don't like police officers. Find it kind of odd. But I learned, whatever you hear, don't take it personally. That's a skill I use today. Mediation, conflict resolution, looking at the big picture, not taking sides, being very open and impartial, hearing everybody, being an active, good listener, and then being innovative with creative ways to resolve an issue.
Okay. So, those were your career skills that you learned. But what was your first job?
Well, my first job, I was a maintenance, for a maintenance worker for a mall, an outside strip mall.
And were there particular skills in that position that are serving you today?
Striping, I see, I was striping a lot, digging holes, fixing water leaks, cleaning the street lamps in the parking lot. But it was just the value of ethical work. You get, you're going to put in eight hours, you're going to work eight hours, you're going to do it and get the job done because people are watching you. You're out there representing the corporation or company and customers. Everybody's watching you. The tenants that rent the stores are watching you. So, you get your job done.
Okay. Last but not least, Commissioner Edwards. What was your first job? And the skills you learned that you still use today?
Well, let me just say that I'm representing District 2. And that's on the far east side of the county. So, everything that my seatmates are not-
You've got the rest.
Representing, I've got the rest. And my first job was actually farm work. And that's where I was raised, in the agricultural area of Thurston County. And my first job was probably in the mid-50s. And I was driving a tractor pulling a hay wagon because I wasn't big enough to pick the bales up and throw them up on the wagon and stack the bales. So, you want to know what I learned from that job, I bet?
I would think you learned how to drive.
Well, I not only learned how to drive, but I learned to take direction pretty well. Because as the littlest guy on the hay crew, and it was paying about 25 cents an hour, if you jerked the clutch, for an example, when you were taken off and everybody wasn't ready and you knocked the haystack down, you got thumped pretty good by the big boys that were on the crew. And so, you were quite educated quite soon to do the right thing all the time. And so, I brought that with me to this position I'm in today.
Okay. Well, I do want to thank you all for taking time out of busy schedule to be here today because we know it can be, it can be a challenge to get everybody in the same place at the same time, other than on your regularly scheduled days. Yeah, and legally too. So, let's move on. We'll start with you on this one, Commissioner Hutchings. You all have been in front of our cameras to host and present information on this program, Thurston County Connection. So, I want to know what your favorite episode in 2019 was of Thurston County Connection?
That's a difficult question, only because we've done so many, all of us, each of us. I really liked that three-part series on civility I did involving the middle school kids, university students, and leaders in our county. But I think what really overshadows that is three different ones that had a common theme. I interviewed some nurses at St. Pete's regarding the neonatal abstinence syndrome, babies that are born of addictive moms. Interviewed homeless folks and folks that were formerly homeless. And interviewed a gentleman who's schizophrenic, who is now in recovery as a result of our Thurston Mason Behavioral Health Organization. The common theme of those three pieces or segments was that it's heart-to-heart, it's human, it's everybody has a story to tell. Listen to their story, be open to listening to the story. And I guess beyond that is trying to break the stigma of, in fact, I don't even say stigma, the prejudice of being homeless, suffering with mental illness, or substance abuse, addiction. Everybody has a story, there's a way out. Because it's almost, it's almost as if someone's prejudice is saying, "You're not worthy of my help." And I want to break that. I want to break that cycle.
Okay. Commissioner Edwards, what was your favorite episode in 2019?
Well, let me preface that with, I was a lawman for about 40 years. So, when I had an opportunity to do a segment on the fire service and Medic One, I really thought that was great. And the reason is because those folks are all our heroes. They really are. And I'm jealous of them. Because when I was a policeman, and my fellow commissioner mentioned this, Hutch did when he was talking earlier, that the citizenry is not always glad to see law enforcement show up on the scene, for whatever reason, depending on what the issue is. But always the citizens are glad to see the fire service show up. And so, I got to be a part of that with the fire service and pointing out the tools of the trade and that type of thing. And then, from the Medic One perspective, we actually have probably the best Medic One service in the nation. And I'm very proud of that. And that's a joint venture of the Board, obviously. So, that was probably my best segment.
Great. And how about you Commissioner Mensah? What was your favorite?
I also had to think about this one carefully because I had a great segment on specialized recreation where I learned a lot about what the county does and how it affects the people who participate. And I did one early in the year on our watershed planning in the Squawee area, which was, I think, really useful for citizens to understand. But I think my favorite, I'm going to pick, is my third one, which was our Fish Passage Program, to work with our public work staff to show what they're doing. And as Commissioner Hutchings, at our recent State of the Community address to the Chamber, pointed out, this program has been locally awarded at the state, national, state, national and international level. Our public work staff has won awards for the Fish Passage Program. And if you're not familiar with it, it's essentially using Public Works project dollars to remove block culverts and allow to basically make habitat that wasn't previously available to, you know, native fish, salmon in particular, available. So, to be able to let the community see the pride that our public work staff take up, we had three key staff members there. And to let them tell their story about what they're doing and that the pride in the program, I think, shone through, was my estimation. So, I was really glad to, you know, give them that opportunity. And it was also kind of fun. We were at Tom Water Falls and it was a light rain. So, we had to really, we weren't sure if it was going to start pouring on us. So, I think we all kind of had fun trying to stay very stoic and make sure we got our episode done. We knew we had good stuff and then it started to rain harder and nobody wanted to stop. And so, we just kind of plowed through it. And I think everybody had, kind of had fun that day.
Great. So, reflecting on 2019, what do you think was one of the biggest accomplishments for the county this year? I'm going to give Commissioner Edwards a chance to start on this one.
Well, I think some of the regulatory reform issues that we got involved in, to make it easier for citizens to get their project done, I guess. And when you think about all the regulatory process that's in place, it's quite complicated. So, streamlining a lot of that process and providing a more efficient service to the taxpayers, I think that was probably one of the, one of the highlights.
Yeah, there's tons of things that you guys accomplished in a year. It might be hard to key in on one. What do you think was one of the biggest accomplishments, Commissioner Mensah?
I'm going to pick a couple, if I could. I'll go quick, I won't take up too much time. But I think, looking back on what we accomplished, one of them may not sound sexy to the audience, but the comprehensive plan, which was really due under Growth Management in 2016. The five major chapters that are acquired by Department of Commerce got completed and approved. And I think that we have to be proud of getting that completed. Similarly, we've had a project on the courthouse. And it's going to the ballot in April. But just moving the project forward so that the people can basically weigh in on it in April, you know, it's taken years to get to the point where we could put the proposal to the voters. And I think accomplishing that, making those hard decisions and big decisions is an accomplishment. And last but not least, we just approved this week the third draft of our Habitat Conservation Plan, which I know is really important to a lot of people in the county. It's been something, again, a longstanding issue. I think our staff did a great job of responding to the feedback we got from U.S. Fish and Wildlife. We had a unanimous approval of that. And we're looking forward to approval of that, hopefully maybe by the end of the year, if we're lucky.
Great. How about you Commissioner Hutchings? What do you think are some of the biggest accomplishments?
I'm going to go back to what Ty said in just a couple of questions ago. And that is the opening of the, the replacement of the fish barriers, the culvert replacements. And because, I'll go a little bit deeper, we have opened up over seven and a half miles of upstream habitat in restoration for our environment, replaced roads. And we're, to date, we've replaced eight of them. We are scheduled this year to do three more. And they're going to be shovel-ready. They'll be starting this year. And as Ty mentioned, the county has received state, national and international recognition for the innovative way that we're going about doing this. And, but I want to kind of, it's not just the county doing it. It's not just Public Works doing it. As Commissioner Mensah said, it's our engineering department, it is our environmental department, it is our stormwater people, it's our road and construction crew people, and even outside vendors. And when these men and women do this work, and they're more passionate and dedicated and more passionate about it and emotional than I am, and I get pretty passionate about it, it's a real energizer to see them at a ribbon cutting and you see tears in their eyes. But beyond that, it is not just the men and women of our county doing this, but our tribal partners, when they show up and they're tearful because they're seeing salmon coming up a river that hasn't ever streamed, that has not been seen in 75 to 100 years. That's powerful that we've done that. And we're still slated to do more and more coming on.
Okay. So, that's a look back at 2019. Let's look forward to 2020. Are there particular projects or issues that you want to focus on specifically in 2020? We'll start with you, Commissioner Mensah.
I would say two issues that will be my focus in 2020. One is climate change. We have a climate, regional climate mitigation plan that should be completed by mid-year. And I want the county to, you know, assuming that those are good, sound recommendations, which I expect they will be, I want us to move forward on doing what we can. It'd be nice if we were getting leadership at the federal level on this issue, but we're not. So, I think it's imperative on us to do what we can at a local level to, the clock is ticking on, I think, on a lot of major changes that could be disastrous for us and our kids. So, that's going to be a focus. And a second focus for me will be balancing our budget. We're going to be building a biennial budget this year. Be my first time doing that. But I'd like to reverse the trend of deficit spending in Thurston County and really get us on a good, solid financial track for the future.
Okay. Commissioner Hutchings, what are the things you'd like to focus on?
I want to continue. As Ty mentioned, we're a nanosecond away from submitting our HCP Habitat Conservation Plan to U.S. Fish and Wildlife. Once that is, and there's no wood to knock on, is, once it's accepted, we start the environmental impact statement. Once that, it'll take a year to get through. I want to make sure this is delivered and now that major hurdle is taken care of. The second thing, of course, would be the culvert replacement. But the, I really want to focus, as Ty said again, I'll keep going to him first, is the budget. And yes, we need to break this trend of overspending or departments coming in over-budgeted. And there, many of the departments are inadequately funded. But that's not because, it's just because of lack of revenue. And that's a whole host of reasons why. But I want to work closely with the legislature, even though it's a short session, in trying to come up with innovative ways to restore some of our funding that has been lost or help us fund some underfunded or unfunded mandates. Because that is continually driving us crazy and causing us major issues down the road.
Commissioner Edwards, there's specific things you'd like to focus on?
Well, again, I want to preface that. I don't think a community can be a successful community unless it's got good schools and good economic development. And I think those are a couple of issues. I know we, as a group, have decided that individually, we were going to go out and support the different bond and levy issues. You know, levies are for learning and bonds are for building. And we can't invest any more in our future than in our kids. Our kids are 30% of our population, but 100% of our future. So, we need to get that right. And then, we need adequate economic development to help our community thrive. And we can help create that by reducing the regulatory burden that businesses face and try to create good jobs so we don't have, if you want to expand on what's been mentioned on the environment, is even the carbon footprint isn't quite as much if we can create good jobs here so we aren't just a bedroom community for Seattle and we can eliminate some of the traffic woes and such. So, I think there's a lot of work to do.
There is. And a lot of these issues are so interrelated. And it jogged my memory or thought when you said 30% of our population are kids, but they're 100% of the future, is a major issue I will be focusing on is the work we're doing with the Regional Housing Council, the county and the three major cities on addressing the homelessness issue. And we have in Thurston County between 800 and 1,000 homeless kids. We have 3,000 that are being fed by the food bank. And we have school buses dropping off kids as they walk into the woods. And that needs to change. We have to stop, not only stop the cycle of the entry into homelessness, but tend to our youth, give our kids a home, give them the mental health and physical health that they need and resources, make them available to make them thrive. Otherwise, we're doomed.
We just had a recent conversation with superintendents from the local districts. And they pointed out that even though our economy, generally speaking, seems to be robust and they are seeing an increase in the needs for free and reduced lunches. So, the impacts of poverty seem to be increasing even though we have a seemingly robust economy. So, there's some-
Do you mean that's heartbreaking?
Yeah, yeah. There's some interesting, you know-
I have to say, there's a lot of people on the fringes-
Right.
-that really aren't doing as well as they could. A lot of that comes from either bad luck or poor choices. And the kids are the ones that suffer from either one of those issues. And it's really not the kids' fault. So, that's why I think the focus is so important on young people.
Okay. So, let's move on. Ty, you're the newest commissioner. You just completed your first year on the commission. So, what has that first year been like as a county commissioner?
A lot of hours, a lot, a steep learning curve. I learned about things I never thought I would ever know about, like solid waste and annexation policy and mental health funding schemes. I didn't realize that I would be sitting on the boards of so many inter-jurisdictional agencies. It's been a real pleasure to be a part of almost all of them. Inter-city transit, you know, I got to be a part of the Zero Fair Discussion, which now launched in January and we're all very proud and excited about. I've sit on the Board of Lot Wastewater Treatment. And that's a very scientific, technical thing that I didn't know a lot about. But I care a lot about the environment and water. So, it was really important that I learned that, I filled in sort of that gap in my understanding. So, it's just been, it's been really great. I mean, the thing about a commissioner is that you touch every part of the community. And there's nothing that goes on in this community that, if you're interested and you have the energy and the time, that you can't be there and connect to and learn about. And people are appreciative that you're there and you're learning. And I try to go to community meetings. I try to make it to every, you know, we're all, the unique thing about the commissioners is we represent districts in a sense, but in a sense, we don't. Because we're all elected by the entire county. And so, to me, something going on in Yelm is just as important as something going on in, you know, West Olympia or Rochester. So, it really just keeps you running because you really, you build relationships all over the county. And I really enjoy that. So, it's just been, it's been everything that I hoped it would be and-
A big year of learning.
A big year of learning.
Big year of learning. So, Commissioner Hutchings and Edwards, you've been, both been on the Board now for three years. How has the role of the commission evolved since you were first elected to the Board? Who wants to, I'm going to just toss that one out there. Who wants to start with that?
Well, probably had to learn patience. It's one of the bigger issues, I suppose. Because I don't think the public understands the bureaucratic process that's in place. And I guess we don't make any rash decisions because we don't make any quick decisions. For me, the main thing is, any of the policy decisions that we make, I want to make sure that we have all of the facts, not just facts from one side or the other, but all of the facts before we make that policy decision. And-
And it can take a while to get that.
Yeah, it does. It takes a while. We have a lot of hearings and a lot of input from the public. People often will bend my ear and I'll say, in my more than 40 years as a public sermon, if you will, I've kept my phone number in the book. Now, I know a lot of young people don't even know what a phone book is.
They're like, "What book?"
That phone number is still there and I still answer the phone at home, or my wife does when we're there. I mean, obviously, we have an answering machine. But we want to be available at all times. I mean, that's kind of one of the things I think all of us are committed to, is being available to the public so that we can make those decisions. But the frustration of the bureaucratic process is probably the biggest single thing because it applies to everything and how frustrating that can be. So-
Especially when you have a constituent who has a specific need that you can maybe address, but not maybe address in a timely enough fashion to satisfy them.
Every one of those citizens that have an issue that bring it to our attention, we might individually think, well, you know, gosh, we've got a lot of other things on our plate and everything. But to that citizen, that's probably the most important thing they're dealing with or they wouldn't have went to the trouble of contacting us in whatever fashion. And I believe they expect, you know, a proper representation. And I think we all try to do that.
Good. John, how have you seen the role of the commission evolve over the last three years?
Well, this is my second year as the Chair of the Board. And if you can imagine a dinner plate with maybe a dozen fresh trout on it and trying to keep that, keep all the fish on that plate as you're going from point A to point B without them slipping and sliding and falling off. I don't like hurting cats, but keeping the fish on the plate, that's what it's like being Chair. And by that, I mean, as the Chair of the Board, I sit in the middle and I'm making sure that everybody has an equal voice, that each has a chance to express his view and opinion, get questions asked, get answers. And when we, when I chair other meetings, for example, the meeting of all the department directors, the meeting of all the electeds that we have, I'm chairing and making sure, again, everybody has equal chance to speak and voice it, make sure we're following Robert's Rules of Order, and make sure things are done properly. So, and being the Chair and in the middle, my seatmates vote on issues first and I'm always the last one to vote. So, it's either going to be unanimous or I'm splitting a vote every single time. And so, navigating that is rather interesting because it's, people view it, they perceive it differently. And when I, when I vote, I'm voting for what I believe is the best thing for the, for the community, not a political answer or, I'm doing the best that I can do. And we often agree, but often we disagree, but we, it's almost equal, it seems. So, that, I'm navigating through that sufficiently and I think successfully. But it's a very different dynamic for my first year, completely different than my first year or two years.
So, big year of learning for Ty and lots of evolution for you. Still learning, probably.
Yes.
Still learning because things change. So, I want to give you all an opportunity to just say something to the viewers, specific to, you know, how you're feeling about your role on the Board or what you're headed into. And I can't remember who I started with first. So, as the Chairman of the Board this year, I'm going to-
Thank you.
Start with you.
I will start with, as you mentioned in the opening, in the opening monologue, we invite the public to get involved civically. When the public is engaged with their government, because I work for about 287,000 people. And to have people engaged in the issue and engaging us is powerful. It's very cool stuff. And people need to be knowing what's going on in the community. So, I would like to invite the people, please get engaged. And one of the big things that we're going to be dealing with, as Commissioner Mensah mentioned upfront, is we all agree the courthouse is woefully inadequate. Something needs to be done. And we're going to work hard to address those inadequacies somehow. So, get engaged. And I wish each and every one of you a very happy, very happy and healthy 2020.
Commissioner Edwards, do you have anything you'd like to share? Final comments?
You know, I guess we've talked about, a little bit about availability. John's talked about getting involved. I think that as we move forward, I want the public to know that I don't work for the government. I work for the taxpayers. And I am readily available for their information. Because as I'm maybe taking a vote on a particular issue, I do want to hear what they think about that issue. So, we can all be contacted through social media and phone numbers, you know, it's in the book type of a thing. We're easy to get ahold of. And I would just encourage folks that have concerns about what their government is doing, they can get ahold of all of us. But I mean, I really, I've always prided myself on being in touch with the community. always prided myself on being in touch with the community and being accessible to the community. And that's where I'm at, and that's who I'm working for.
Okay. Newest member of the Board, we're going to give you the last word.
Okay. Well, I just thought, you know, to say, if you, don't rush to judgment about what the Commission's doing. The issues are very complex at times, and there's a lot of nuances. And if you hear that we're doing something and it seems a little bit off to you, you know, I encourage you, kind of connected to what Hutch said about engagement, but look a little deeper, you know, review the meetings if you can, give us a call, email us. Why did you do that, Ty? Because a lot of times, we have a set of bad choices. Sometimes we have, you might say, why are they spending money on that? Well, it turns out that that's a state grant. It can, money can only be spent on that. You know, why are they spending money on that and not this? There's a lot of things that are just really hard to understand until you actually have the full briefing, as Commissioner Edwards said, all the facts, and sort of see what the range of choices are. Sometimes you don't have the choice that you thought you would have wanted. That's what I've learned in this year, and I hope that citizens will, you know, reach out to us, ask us questions. I'm always happy to, I respond to every email just about, about, you know, hey, why did you do, why are you guys doing that? Happy to explain, you know, what, how that issue looked from my perspective. And I think that would, you know, it's really going to help as we work through a lot of difficult issues in the next couple of years.
Okay.
See, it's easy to get along with these guys, because they're so doggone smart and engaged, and engaging. I respect them both.
I agree. I want to thank you all for being here. I know, again, it can be a challenge to get everybody's schedules to align for these kinds of events, but we, it's the fish, the slippery fish on the plate. Thank you for being here. We want to thank you for joining us today. To watch more Thurston County programs like this one, head to the county's YouTube channel at the URL listed below, or watch here on Channel 3, or at the TC Media website. There you can livestream Board meetings and so much more. Thanks for joining us for this edition of Thurston County Connection.